Today, November 21st, 2023, a regular Springfield Local Board of Education meeting. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Hofer?
Here.
Thank you. Could you please stand for the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we'd like to have the Springfield High School and Junior High Student of the Month recognition.
Good evening. I am here on behalf of National Honor Society, who recognizes one high school and one junior high student each month. We are going to start with our student who is in attendance this evening. So Ty, will you come on up? I am going to read to you what the teachers wrote about you, and then I'll give you a copy of that and your certificate. So this says Ty Smith. Ty comes to class every day with a positive attitude. He is an eager and motivated student who likes to learn and understand. Ty is always willing to participate and help other students. He's an excellent example of a true Springfield Spartan, and he was nominated by Mrs. Lori Smith. Congratulations. Right now, the certificate is posted as you come inside our main door. As the months go on, it will move to the wall outside of the community room and will stay there for the duration of the school year. Congratulations. Our other student who is nominated is Pa Two, and this is what the teachers wrote about her. I would like to nominate Junior High Student Pa Two for Student of the Month. Pa is deserving of this honor because of the integrity she demonstrated in class. She was presented with a very difficult situation and had the courage to stand up for what was right. In all of my years as a teacher, I witnessed the level of courage from Pa that is rare, and I am extremely proud of the young woman she is. Pa Two is an eighth grader in Algebra I. She's an extremely hard worker and strives to do her best in anything that she does. Pa has taken two tests so far this year and has received 100% on both. She always has a smile and never complains about anything. She has been my student for two years now, and I can say that she is a great representative for Student of the Month. So those two statements were written by Mrs. Novicki and Dr. Burgess. Congratulations to Pa.
Is cross-country here? I don't think so. Okay, so just a little bit of, you know, I'm going to do in my super test report, I will talk more about the sports and all the accolades that we received at that point in time.
Okay. Item number six, it is recommended that the board go into executive session at this time for preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees, and to investigate or charges against a student.
So moved.
Been moved in second, Mr. Adams?
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Hey, thanks, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you for your patience. The next item is Board Members Informal, and, excuse me, I'd like to start, if that's okay. I'd like a sincere thank you to all who graciously and without reservation stepped up to assist the Levy Committee in its efforts to inform the voters and community of the district's needs for support. This is mine, this is not something, so I'm not speaking for anyone else. Though the Levy failed to gain voter approval, the support from those who worked on the effort was gratifying, and it's so very appreciated. Their dedication to doing what is best for students was obvious. I thank you beyond what words can express, and ask that you continue to persevere to successfully complete this task. I want to say to the students, you are the most important thing that we have to take care of. Hang in there with us, please, as we continue to work at getting you the additional forces and activities to best equip you to move to the next step in your future. Thank you, too, students, for being a wonderful goal for all the spokes who are supporting you. Thank you. Kenny?
I don't have anything today. As usual, in Columbus, with the Department of Educational and Workforce Development, the State Board of Education filed a lawsuit in order to stop the implementation of that through House Bill 33. That was shot down by a magistrate in Columbus. So the Department of Educational and Workforce will march forward. Governor Dewine has wasted little time in appointing Jessica Bolantini as an interim director of DEW. Some other things quickly. House Bill 187, Senate Bill 153, happens to deal with property valuations and legislation. I'm not sure exactly what the Senate is going to do, although they have approved five senators to sit on a Joint Committee on Property Tax Review and Reform. The House hasn't done anything with that. Another Senate bill, which is interesting, would establish a foster-to-college scholarship program, required Department of Educational and Workforce to hire full-time school foster care liaisons to make an appropriation for foster-to-college scholarship program. It's been pretty quiet in Columbus, but I have a feeling things are going to step up. On a personal note, I want to thank the voters of Springfield Township for re-electing me to another four-year term here on the board. I deeply appreciate that, and we will work hard to move Springfield forward. I think we have a good, I do believe we have a good administration. Not that we agree all the time on everything, but I think, I think we have the district, the values that we believe in, students that we support, and the employees that we employ. We have your best interests. So thank you very much.
In the spirit of the holiday we have coming up on Thursday, there's plenty of things that are negative that we could focus on, but I think if we can focus on the things that we're thankful for, and the people who make those positive changes in our lives, that's one thing we really want to focus at this time, and this is the year to do it.
Thank you. Miranda?
I also want to thank everybody that worked on the Levy Committee. We have a lot of meetings, almost every single week. I am not as gracious as Cynthia with everything I say when things don't go our way, but there's been a lot of negativity, a lot of rumors throughout the school district. I hope that with everything that's going on, there'll be a lot of healing, a lot of moving forward, and coming together to do what's best for the kids, the teachers, the community, and our school district. I love Springfield. I love being a Spartan. My kids love being a Spartan. We're not going to stop until the Levies get passed, and we can be proud of everything that we're doing, so.
Thank you. Number eight, approval of minutes. It is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 17, 2023, and special meeting of the 24th, 2023.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been so moved in second that the motion be approved. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
At this time, item number nine, citizens' comments on agenda items are welcome. And participants are asked to limit to five minutes duration. Are there any comments on agenda items? Right, number 10 is recommended that the board approve payment of bills for the month of October pending audit, and these have been provided in Exhibit 2.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Been moved in second, Mr. Adams?
I'm using this computer for the first time. Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passed. Number 11, payment of bills. Then and now, it is recommended that the board approve a resolution for payment of bill for Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.41D. And this is Exhibit 3.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second to vote on the motion. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Motion passed. Number 12, acceptance of financial reports. It is recommended that the board accept the financial reports from the Treasury for October 2023, and these are Exhibits 4, 5, and 6.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, Mr. Adams?
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Motion passed. Number 13 is personnel. It is recommended that the board accept and approve the following personnel items. 13.1, employment. Reassign classified employee Joseph Eppner as a four-hour standby bus monitor per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure effective October 16, 2023. The next item is reassign classified employee Cassie Wheatley as a 2.5-hour cafeteria worker per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure, effective November 6, 2023. This will be in addition to her bus monitor position. 13.3, employment. Reassign classified employee Tappeta Cunningham Radzik as a 2.5-hour everyday reading teacher assistant at Spring Hill Elementary per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure effective September 25, 2023. This is in addition to her library teaching assistant position. Item 13.4, employ David Barber as a four-hour custodian at Spring Hill and Shrop per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure, and that would be effective October 31, 2023. 13.5, employ Jennifer Heron as a 6.75 standby afternoon preschool teaching assistant per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure, and this would be effective October 23, 2023. 13.6, employment. Employ the following as a classified substitute per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure. Amy Hurst, and her employment would be effective 9/18/23. Kristy Mash, effective first day assigned. 13.7, non-supplemental contract revisions. High school, approve the following revisions. High school dramatics change from a single contract to a split contract between Ashley Fraley and Lindsay Ibos at 4% each. Junior class advisor, remove Leona Baldinger from the contract, and Melinda Weakland will remain at 2%. 13.8, athletic supplemental contract, approve the following. Contract for the 2023 school year per the negotiated agreement, Terry Kaiser as cheer coach at 5%. 13.9, these are volunteer coaches. Approve the following volunteer coaches for the 23-24 school year, pending proper licensure. Bill Thomas, boys basketball. Stephen Cole, boys junior high basketball. Brian Cuffler, boys junior high basketball. Jacob Bostic, wrestling. And Kyle Haddux, wrestling.
I'll make a motion.
I'm second.
Just a couple of things. I'm really excited that Ashley and Lindsay have decided to take over the dramatics, so, you know, we're going to have a play this year, so that's exciting, you know, that gives us a group of kids to get involved. And Terry Kaiser, that was for the sparkle chair. I mean, she's done really quite a bit, and I have it in my superintendent notes, but I'm going to say it now. I didn't have a chance to go down to Capitol Conference, but I did get to see it through FaceTime, and the kids were just beaming, and it was a really exciting time for them. And they enjoyed it. So that's, so she well deserves.
Thank you.
For everything that she does.
Where are we with, we have a motion?
Yeah, we do.
We do.
I mean, go to the room.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Motion passed. Number 14, memorandum of understanding Title I services. It is recommended that the board approve the memorandums of understanding with Barberton City Schools, Waterloo Local Schools, and Coventry Local Schools to provide Title I services to Springfield residents who attend St. Augustine, St. Joseph, and St. Francis Schools. And these are, excuse me, in Exhibit 7.
So moved.
Second.
So this is something that we do every year for our students who attend non-public schools, because these are federal funds, we are required to service students at those schools as long as the schools are participating. In this particular case, we enter into the MOU with the public school, because we are working with the public school in order to provide the services at the non-public schools. So we are actually working with Waterloo, with Barberton, and I forget the other one, all the Coventry, in order to provide the services at the diocese schools. That is how it's done. We cannot enter into a contract directly with those schools. It's either that, or we have to put our own employee there, and the amounts are so small that it would not cover the cost, it wouldn't even come close to covering the cost of an employee.
Thank you.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 15, monitoring agreement, the Diligent Electronic Security Systems. It is recommended that the board approve an alarm monitoring agreement with Diligent Electronic Security Systems for Shrop Intermediate, and that is shown in Exhibit 8.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Mr. Adams?
Mrs. Paul Price, 348.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, it's an annual contract.
I apologize, definitely.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Do you want to add anything? I didn't mean to jump the gun.
No, it's just a, this is our alarm, security alarm monitoring agreement was up, so we did move this from a previous company we're working on. As the contracts expire, moving them with Diligent, we've used them at one of our locations, been very happy with them, so looking, working to consolidate all these contracts into one company.
Thank you.
Again, I apologize for that. All right, Mr. Adams?
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Number 16, five-year forecast. Mr. Adams?
Before we get into this report that everybody loves, I too want to reiterate what Mr. Petrie said and wish you all Happy Thanksgiving. It's one of my favorites now that I have little grandkids running around my house and eat a lot of food, kiss the children, your grandkids, and if you have a spouse, kiss them, too. Forecast. As you probably already know, twice a year, we're required to produce this to Department of Education. We'll probably produce another one before the next requirement. Our forecast hasn't changed anything. We have relabeled some things just so we can focus on the importance of renewals. But here's our cash. Our cash balance anticipated at the end of this year, our cash balance at the end of next year. Here's your, these are the, this is kind of the warning line. This tells you that you're spending more than you're receiving. And the reason these are so large, again, I will talk about it, but basically for the next two years, we have some cash, not as much as I want, but as a way, it was very disheartening for the levy to go down, considering all the work that people put in, in their heart and soul. If we could drop it down, no. Here's what I really want to focus the most on. These numbers right here, okay? Those are the renewals. We have five renewals. Four of them hit the general fund, which is the five-year forecast. Four of them represent almost 50% of all the revenue we get from taxpayers. That is a large number. We've always appreciated the support we get from the community on these renewals, and without that support, as you can only imagine, without $6.2 million, what that would cause. So renewals are essential for our survival. That's the only way I can say it. Personnel services up here, that's the bulk of our expenditures. That's salaries, benefits, right there. So everybody always asks, these two numbers combined represent over 75% of the total money we spend in the district. That number right there currently has the recent, it has the contract in it, if people wonder, so that's all said. We're hoping, we're hoping that, if you want to go down a little farther, I haven't forgot about the levy. Here it is. I had to move it from here to here. Every time you don't pass it in the current year, you lose, you lose a year's collection. First year, you only get half, because the fiscal year and the calendar year don't line up, but I've kept it on here. I'm sure it's coming back up. It's needed. With the levy, okay, with the levy and passing the renewals, we can make it out, okay? Without the levy and with the renewals, we're going to be in the red again a few years out in the future. So, does anybody have any questions out there? If you do, employees, email me. Residents, email me. A lot of you have my cellphone, and I'd be more than glad. I think the more information that's out there, the more clarity that, you know, because we always hear all this stuff, and I hate to say it, but most of the stuff is rumors. So the goal in the Treasury's office is to squelch those rumors, provide facts, and things, I believe, will get clearer for everybody. Thanks, everybody.
I don't think we, it is recommended that the board approve the five-year forecast. Did you have?
So moved. I'll second.
Been moved in second, Mr. Adams?
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Motion passed. Number 17, resolution adopting tentative agreement with the Springfield Local Association of Classroom Teachers. Resolve, resolve that the board hereby adopts the tentative agreement reached with the Springfield Local Association of Classroom Teachers on November 9, 2023, for a successor two-year labor agreement, and authorizes and directs the superintendent to execute a final agreement reflecting that tentative agreement on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Second.
So just, first, I just want to say, I'm really glad that we were able to come to an agreement on this. This is a resolution for the tentative agreement, because the actual contract is being typed up as we speak, and once that comes down, then that's what will be approved and sent out to everybody. I'm going to follow through with Miranda, you know, it's been a rough beginning of the year, so hopefully that we've been able to come to an agreement, that we're going to be able to move forward and get what we need to get done to keep making Springfield successful. So I want to thank everybody who sat in on the meetings, the team that sat in on the meetings, the teachers who sat in on the meetings. I know it was long and arduous, but I'm glad that we had gotten it done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to everybody.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Number 18, overnight extended trip. The agenda, there is an attachment describing the, excuse me, there's an attachment describing the trip. Marching band is recommended that the board approve an overnight extended trip for the Springfield marching band and chaperones to travel to Chicago, Illinois, to perform in sightsee from May 3, 2024, through May 5, 2024. All expenses for this trip will be paid through fundraising and by the participants.
So moved.
Second.
So this is, the band, you know, goes on a trip every year. Last year, they went to Disney. I think the year before that, they might have gone to Washington. So this year, it's just a rotation, so this kid, so if you're in the band for four years, you get to hit the different ones. So this is Chicago, and we are very pleased with Mrs. Fraley and everything that she's doing with our band.
Just a suggestion. I looked up the motor carrier, their record is excellent, and what had happened down Interstate 70. I would suggest that also that you get a direction of where they're going, what routes they're taking, and then that they would email the administration office.
That's a very good idea. That's a very good idea.
Just to be honest, I'm sorry.
And also, too, in light of what happened in Tuskegee Valley, which, you know, of course, our hearts and prayers are out with that. When we do, one of the things that we have to be more, is when we do take the kids on field trips or going on trips, to have a seating chart, so we know where everybody's sitting on the bus, too. And like I said, our hearts and prayers are out with Tuskegee Valley. That's a no parent or community or school district. Should have to have to deal with that.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Motion passed. Motion passed. Number 19 Donations. Walmart. Donation of school supplies from Walmart valued at approximately $2,300, and that was donated to the entity of Springfield Local Schools. Friends of Lakemore Water Parks Incorporated. Donation of $150 from the Friends of Water Park, Lakemore Water Parks Incorporated to the Springfield Athletic Department.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Adams?
Do you want to talk a little bit about Walmart?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
So Walmart has decided to be a great partner with us here in Springfield Local Schools. They, they made multiple donations. This one that we're talking about today for the approximately $2,300, that provided almost a half pallet of paper, of loose leaf paper for our students, crayons, colored pencils, things like that. They actually contacted us earlier this week or late last week, and they said, we have another truckload for you. And so we actually have another truckload from Walmart for items that is, we're working on splitting up. There's some interesting things in there. We've got some fun costumes for kids. We've got some prizes that we can use for kids in the PBIS stores, some great things. So we will have future donations from Walmart constantly coming in. We're lucky to have them.
Very good of them, very good.
Since we're talking about Walmart, Shop With a Cop's coming up, and I do know that they still need volunteers for chaperones. I did it last year, I think, so did you do it last year, Justin? So if you're interested in coming, it's a really good time. You usually get to meet like the cutest kids in the whole darn world. So if you want to do it.
And let me give, let me give you the date on that.
Uh, December.
Is it December 9?
9, yeah.
December 9th at 8 o'clock, we meet, we meet at the high school for breakfast.
Yep.
And then we take the kids shopping.
Take the kids and then come back.
And then we come back, and there's Santa Claus, and what's really great is, I think it's the National Honor Society does the wrapping?
Yes.
Yes, so the National Honor Society does, then wraps the gifts for the kids. So they have it. And if you've never taken a kid to Shop With a Cop, I am telling you, it is probably one of the most rewarding, because, you know, you think these kids go, and you think they're gonna buy for themselves, and they don't. They, they have their list of gifts that they want to buy for, for everybody else. And sometimes it's kind of sad, too, because it's, it's like they know that's when they can maybe get a winter jacket or, you know, different things. And our volunteers, you know, we try to tell them not to, but they're always slipping them money, tell them to go a little bit more. But if you have not ever volunteered for it, I would suggest everybody do it at least once, because it is the most, it's very appreciative of the, of the kids and the families.
December 9.
December 9, 8 o'clock.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
We skipped 20. I've gone over to five here. No, we're gonna go to 21.
I'm sorry, I.
No, that's.
No, Central Office.
I, so no Treasurer's report?
That was, my five here was my turn.
Central Office?
Good evening. A couple of things I wanted to focus on this evening, one being our safety grant that we have, one of the items that we have been working on, you can see here, the PA upgrades that we've been doing across the district to enhance our ability to communicate well with the buildings anytime, day in and day out, but also during emergencies. So you'll see some new speakers around the building that we've been working on installing, and then we, today, we actually had our first training for a new fingerprint system that we will have in the district for us to be able to take and process fingerprints ourselves and send them to the state of Ohio and the FBI to process new employees and existing employees as they renew. There, we'll be able to do that in-house rather than have to go out to a third party to do that.
So that's a grant fund that's working between the business office and human resource. So what is, what we're hoping to do, what we plan on doing, is bring the cost down for our teachers and our employees who have to get fingerprinted, because when you go outside to get fingerprinted, there's an additional fee associated with it, not just the running it through BCI FBI like we have to. So with the ability to purchase the equipment, we now have the ability to do the fingerprints just around things, so we don't have like quarters and things like that everywhere, pretty close to that cost for our employees.
Sweet.
And that should be, we anticipate having that up and, up and running around the first of, first of the year in January, so that'll be accessible to staff. We will only be doing it with staff and candidates. We will not open it up to the public, but for our staff and new candidates, it should be a great benefit.
Yes, besides preschool's favorite food feast tomorrow, as we kick off Thanksgiving, but also for academics, our first, or our next set of testing will be the English language learners will take the OALPA test starting about mid-February, and they're tested on, in four different areas, speaking, listening, reading, and writing. It is a very difficult test, but it does show us if they're progressing with learning the English language and applying it. So that will come mid-February.
And how many EL kids have we've been growing in that?
We, yes, we're sitting about 45 students across the district, not including the six preschoolers.
All right. For me first, I just want to talk a little bit about fall sports. I want to thank Kevin Vaughn and the fall coaches for fantastic fall season. We've had quite the accolades this year for fall, so I'm just gonna go through them very quickly. Across, because a lot of times they were gonna be here, but basketball's already started, so it's, a lot of our kids do the dual sports. For the cross-country, as a team, the boys finished third in the Metro Athletic Conference. The two teams they finished behind were state qualifying, with the one being the state runner-up, so we did an awesome job there. Peyton Carney finished third in the MAC, and then qualified for regionals and states. Out of 189 runners, he finished 52nd at the state championships, and we're very proud of Peyton. On the girls' side, Nora Kunkler was a regional qualifier. And then for our junior high cross-country, junior high doesn't have too many sports, but cross-country is one of them. We had three athletes compete in the middle school state championship, Brianna Curry, Kendall Furlong, and Willard Kunkler. And reaching the podium was Brianna Curry with a ninth-place finish. And William, Willard Kunkler was not only the MAC champ, he earned the right to be on the top of the podium, winning the middle school state champion. So our cross-country team, very good. Girls' soccer, this year, we had eight wins. The girls' soccer program, it's a record-setting season with the most team wins in the program history. Last year, we won one. So this year, we moved it up to eight, so, you know, kudos to the girls and the coaches. Individually, Kendall Wilderman set the record for the most goals scored in a single season with 31. Cameron McCall set the record with most saves in a single season with 161. Boys' soccer, we had four of our players receive recognition as the All Northeast District Honors. Lane Chapman was on first team. Kwai Seen-Win, Jau Seen-Win was second team. Anko Uu was honorable mention, and Shay Tatoo was also honorable mention. So that's also very impressive. Our boys' golf team, back-to-back MAC champs. Five of our six golfers received all MAC honors with three earning first-team honors, Connor Eckenrode, Brady Han, and Jacob Thomas. On their way to their second straight MAC championship, the team set a school record for the most matches won, with a season record of 21 and 3. Brady Han is the first individual in school history to qualify for the Golf State Championship. The 1974 team was the last time we qualified for a state championship in golf. Brady shot a 76 during one of his 18-hole rounds at the state championship, and this led to his 27th-place finish, so. And Brady's round of 76 also was a new school record. And Jack Morgan, again, received honors as MAC Coach of the Year for the second straight year in a row. So our golf team is really doing an awesome. And if you've never gone to a golf match, I'm suggesting go to one, because it's, don't drive with Kevin Vaughn, because he's crazy on the golf cart, but a couple times, we're gonna be going over hills and falling, but to watch these kids golf is just amazing. We had 206 athletes in grade 7 through 12 that participated in a fall sport. Out of that 206, 98 of our student athletes made honor roll for the first grading period. 33 of our student athletes made merit roll for the first grading period, and 63%, which, that comes up to about 63% of our students, making the honor roll. So, you know, our fall sports did a wonderful job, and I'm really looking forward to winter sports with that. This, a couple Mondays ago, or last Monday, it's every day's running into every day. I want to thank Michelle Hannah and Meredith Gray for a great National Honor Society induction. We inducted 14 new members, and we recognized 16 secondary members, so congratulations to them. I already talked a little bit about the Sparkles at, down at OSBA, Capitol Conference. My goal is to get our kids to be represented down there every year, if not in the performance, but in the student achievement field, because I think it's a great, I think it's a great experience for the kids to be down there. And then I want to echo what Cynthia had said about, and Miranda about the levy, you know, the results were very disappointing, but I am so very appreciative of all the volunteers that stepped up to help with the campaign. It was really a very well-run program. Just for everybody out there, remember, we have no school Thursday and Friday for our Thanksgiving break, and then no school on Monday for Conference Comp Day, and I just hope everyone has a safe holiday weekend and enjoy some time with their families.
Thank you. So items worthy of your note, I won't do the 23rd, 24th, and 27th, because I think those are kind of top of the line. On December 19th, our next regular board meeting at 6:00 PM in this location. On December 21, winter vacation begins, and on January 4th, classes resume. Item number 24, any citizens' comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none, then we have a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and Mr. Adams?
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, and thank you.